Good evening, I call to order the June 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a parking validation announcement. Anyone parking for this meeting or using the bus may pick up passes from our sheriff's deputies on their way out and it will be valid for today only. Ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable rules, laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. All right, Commissioners, we move to our consent agenda. Does anyone from the public have questions or comments about our consent agenda this evening? All right, we did discuss at our 3:00 PM briefing that we would like to adjust the agenda this evening to remove the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Commissioner appointment to the Boards and Commissions section of the agenda, as well as moving our proclamation to just before public comment. Do we have a motion to...
So moved?
Like second, second. We have Commissioner Ball and Whitesize, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move forward with our meeting with those changes. All right, do we have a... And there we go, we've proved our consent agenda. Yes ma'am? Yes, yes, we have adopted the plan, but we are making the appointment of the seat at the appropriate place on the agenda. All right. We are going to move our Gun Violence Prevention Proclamation to before public comment. And we have Regina Herring, Hannah Ledgerton, Will Baxter, Tony Shivers, Deputy Secretary Lassiter, and members of the Peace Team here to accept the proclamation and say a few words. And I am taking a personal point of privilege as Chair this evening to read this proclamation. Thank you all for being here. And before we get started, I think most folks in the room know that I have a very personal gun violence survivor story of being held hostage when I was 16 years old. And this has become an incredibly important issue that I'm proud to work with each and every one of you on to reduce gun violence in our community. And I proudly wear my orange and my Survivor badge while I join you this evening. County of Buncombe Proclamation, Gun Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, June 2025. Whereas according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, there were nearly 47,000 firearm-related deaths in the U.S. in 2023. And whereas, 58% of these gun-related deaths were suicide, while 38% were murders. And whereas, data indicates about 125 people die from firearm-related injury each day in the U.S. And about 8 in 10, 79% of U.S. murders in 2023 involved a firearm. And whereas, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas, firearms have been leading the cause of death for American children and teens since 2020, with no other peer nation having firearm deaths among the top causes of child mortality. And whereas, in 2024, the Buncombe County Register of Deeds recorded 44 death certificates that showed someone died by a gun. Thirty-five of those incidents occurred inside Buncombe County, with the youngest descendant only 16 years old, while the oldest was 94 years old. Whereas, communities across the nation, including Buncombe County, are working to end deaths by guns, including suicides, accidents, and gun violence, with evidence-based solutions. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with promoting gun ownership safety and keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas, all gun owners in North Carolina have a responsibility to safely store their firearms, which helps prevent accidents as well as theft. And whereas, since 2021, Buncombe County's Justice Services Department has partnered with community-based organizations in pilot community safety initiatives directed toward healing, support, practical resources, and a reduction in violence for our communities with the highest rates of gun violence. They continue to partner with community-based organizations to implement a community-based public health response to violence, offering training and support for community health worker violence prevention professionals, youth leadership development, and building a multi-sectoral coalition to prevent and respond to community violence. And whereas, Buncombe County's Health and Human Services Department seeks to strengthen our community by advancing health, safety, and opportunity, including preventing injury and death by promoting the health and well-being of populations using data, research, and effective policies and partnerships. And whereas, we recognize survivors of gun violence, honor the lives to gun violence lost in Buncombe County, commit to reducing gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage gun owners to commit to safely storing their guns using approved measures. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim June 1 through 7 as North Carolina's Safe Week of Action, and June 2025 as Gun Violence Prevention and Awareness Month in Buncombe County, this third day of June 2025, signed by Amanda Edwards, Chair of the County Commission.
Good evening. I'm Regina Herring, I'm the Director of Justice Services here in Buncombe County. And I'm honored, in honor of the Gun Violence Prevention and Awareness Month, I would like to highlight a few of our contributions to reducing community violence activities in Buncombe County. Since 2020, the county, through its Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, its Fiscal Recovery Funds, and the U.S. Department of Justice Grants, we've leveraged over $2 million to address community violence prevention efforts. Justice Services has two dedicated staff, Heather...
Hannah?
Led... Yeah, I'll get it right. Led... Led... So I'm gonna get it right. And Will Baxter, our Program Coordinator, who are working with our community partners to identify and implement long-term and sustainable community violence strategies. I'm gonna turn it over to Heather, I meant to Hannah, I'm gonna get these names right, so she can move forward with the agenda.
Hello, I'm Hannah Ledgerton, Youth Justice Division Manager with the Justice Services Department. In Buncombe County, we are implementing a community-based public health response to violence, which aims to address root causes of violence, advance community and youth leadership, activate community brilliance, build multilayered sector coalition, and restore community connectivity. It is my deep honor to do this work alongside Will Baxter, our Community Safety and Violence Prevention Coordinator, as well as local and state champions of this work. Tonight, we honor community health worker, violence prevention professionals on the Peace Team. From the Spark Foundation, my daddy taught me that, and Youth Transformed for Life. One of our local champions, Tony, and community health worker, violence prevention professionals, Tony Shivers, will speak on behalf of the Peace Team about the importance of supporting communities daily in accessing what they need to live healthy, safe, and thriving lives. In closing, we will hear from Deputy Secretary William Lassiter of the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Juvenile Justice, and Filquency Prevention, who champions violence prevention and safe gun storage through the NC Safe Campaign and his daily work to create safer schools and communities for all our state's youth. Tony?
Board Chair, Commissioners, thank y'all for the appreciation, for letting us know how much y'all support us, and also for the people in this room. The Peace Team is dedicated community health workers who are trained in violence prevention, but our lived experience give us the opportunity to go and love on folks back into the community by providing education and advocacy through community engagement. And so with this dedicated team, we had the opportunity to not only check in on folks, but continue to be a great support system, because with a great support system and wraparound services, you give a person that has lost hope in community the opportunity to think and have vision and purpose and want to do something different. And that also have the opportunity to reduce gun violence. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is William Lassiter, I'm the Deputy Secretary for the Department of Public Safety over Juvenile Justice. And I am very thankful for the Board's proclamation tonight. Thank you Chair for your work on this and for your advocacy in this issue. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety started the NC Safe Campaign three years ago, which stands for Secure All Firearms Effectively. This is a campaign where we ask for gun owners to be responsible with their gun ownership. Last year in the state of North Carolina, we did a survey and found that 42% of all households own a firearm. Of those 42% of households, 50% of them did not choose to safely store that firearm in their home. We tell residents of the state of North Carolina every single day, don't let the thing that you bought to protect your family end up being the thing that harms your family. We appreciate all the efforts that are taking place here in Buncombe County to make sure that that message is getting across to our citizens. We have gun locks that are available for the Sheriff's Office and also for the Police Department that we provide across the state of North Carolina, and we are also partnering with other community-based partners to get these gun locks into the hands of citizens that need them. Help us spread this message across the state of North Carolina, because it's... This year alone, in the state of North Carolina, we've lost five kids under the age of five years old by an insecure firearm in the household. That firearm was used by a sibling or a friend to kill another person in that home. These are preventable incidents, completely preventable, by people taking the responsible step of safely storing their firearm. I appreciate the Board and the Commission for stepping up and recognizing this issue and passing this resolution today. Thank you so much.
Many thanks again to each of you who are doing this incredibly important and life-saving work across our entire county, and for Deputy Secretary Lassiter for joining us as well. We move to public comment. We have, right now, Sarah, about 21 signed up. Okay. You wanna take a look?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on just a moment.
And Sarah, is that, are there more people in the overflow room as well? Okay, well, in the interest of making sure we hear from everybody equally, I'd make a motion that we consider reducing time, two minutes per person for public comment, as to the budget specifically.
As to the budget specifically. And it does appear that so far everyone signed up is speaking on the budget. Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Horton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you Vice Chair Moore. This will allow us the opportunity to hear from everyone who's with us this evening. So the time limit for individual comment to the Board on the budget this evening is two minutes. Please state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. All public comments must be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individual commissioners, staff, or audience members. The Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. Please note, a group can elect one person to speak for 10 minutes if eight people in attendance relinquish their right to speak on the issue. And one last reminder, please keep all cheers, chants, boos to a minimum this evening. All right, it looks like Sheriff Miller is our first one on, and after that, Pepe Asabo will speak. Good evening Sheriff.
Good evening. So my name is Quentin Miller, I'm the Sheriff here in Buncombe County, just wanted to follow your protocol. So first, good evening. First, I want to thank each of you for providing me the opportunity to speak. And I would just tell you, this is a very important event, because it's historic. Historic, because this is our first budget post Hurricane Helene. And so this, this makes this very important for me, as well as for the individuals of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office who serve our community. Let me just say, as you consider, and I'm sure this was a challenging budget time for each of you, I'm sure it was very challenging, and I want to make this clear that I understand that this has been challenging. And also, this has forced us to rethink, you know, our priorities. And as you consider tonight's decision, I ask that you keep in mind the men and women of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, the citizens that we serve, and most important, the public safety aspect of this. The way we, the way you vote tonight will show everyone what really matters to each of you. So I ask that you consider public safety and your thoughts and your priorities this evening as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff Miller, Pepe Asabo, followed by Henry Wilson.
Greetings Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I will try to speak quickly, but understandably. And just note, I'm speaking as an individual. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board, the Asheville City Schools Board of Education as a whole. As I understand it, it is the responsibility of our Boards of Education to request funding for their budgets, and I appreciate the role of the Commissioners to anticipate revenue, adjust tax rates, and allocate funding. I recognize that there is more than one way to fund our budget requests tonight. Buncombe County Schools requested funding for no cuts in student-facing positions, is my understanding. I ask that you fund the BCS request in full tonight as a baseline commitment. We didn't have their budget when we voted on ours. So our funding request includes gap funding to preserve our preschool program, address unfunded mandates, and meet the real needs of our staff and students. One option to fund these gaps is to restore some or all of the missing 1.38 cents of the ACS supplemental tax, which is levied only in the Asheville City Schools District, and to make up the difference with grants for early childhood or other pending sources that you don't necessarily know what they are tonight. If our requests are not fully funded tonight, it's a modest tax break for me and for my neighbors, but it's a huge tax break for large property owners and for out-of-state healthcare, hospitality, and commercial interests who can and should be asked to contribute more to our community. I'm very grateful for what you're doing, thank you very much, and please hold us all in your hearts.
Thank you Pepe, Henry Wilson, and then April Wilson. I try to give everyone a heads up who's coming next, so that we can keep our flow moving. Forgot to bring our stool. Talk it to the microphone, okay? You have two minutes, don't you start talking?
Hi, my name is Henry Wilson. I am a kindergarten route Lucy Anne Herring. There are so many special things about my school, like my Jump Start, Miss Marlowe, specials, garden, tours, and challenges. I got to practice going from school to eight, for eight days, at kindergarten Jump Start. Tours helped me decide which school I like. For the tours, I liked the playground, and the tours were actually open houses.
You liked the open houses and the tours a lot.
Miss Marlowe helped me when I was forced to feel comfortable, to Lucy Anne Herring. I like learning so many new things in specials. My three favorite specials are library, PE, and Spanish. Lucy Anne Herring has a really nice garden, so I can learn about plants and compost. My teachers give me special challenges in math and reading. My special challenges are three-digit multiplication, and sometimes division, and also sometimes subtraction. I hope you decide to help my school keep helping kids like me. Thank you.
Henry, thank you for being brave to come speak to us this evening.
So I'm April Wilson, and that was all Henry. He came up with all the facts of all the things that he thought were special about his school, and he couldn't even list them all. And I want to clarify some of the things that he spoke about. Miss Marlowe was his EC teacher, who worked with him once a week. Marlowe was an EC teacher who worked with him once a week for 30 minutes, and if their team had been any shorter-staffed, she was so squeezed for time, I don't think he would have had that experience with her. And we would have thought much more strongly about charter schools or private schools, or even homeschools, because we weren't sure that he was gonna be okay in public school, because he had a one-on-one support person in preschool. Kindergarten Jump Start was an amazing program that we just happened to find out about, where he got to spend a half-day with teachers and basically practice going to kindergarten. And again, that's sort of a special program that really helps kids feel comfortable starting kindergarten. That would be an easy program for ACS to cut if their budget needs aren't met. So many other kids also need these programs. His class now has, just recently, in the last two weeks, got a one-on-one support person. I talked with Dr. Maggie before this meeting, and these six positions come from grant funding, because there's not funding to give the kids that need it one-on-one support. These positions clearly should be permanent positions. Restoring our supplemental 12-cent tax would really help. You've seen how well public school supporters can mobilize, and we will see you guys in November 2026.
Thank you April. Jim Fulton, followed by Janet Burhoe-Jones.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Jim Fulton, I live in Commission District 1. Thank you for your time and for listening tonight. In fiscal year 2015, Buncombe County taxpayers contributed about $74 million to education. This year, the county manager proposes $113 million. That's a 53% increase over 10 years. At your May 20 meeting, union representatives mandated $126 million and called for 7.52 cent property tax hike for every 100 in valuation. Let's not forget, the county manager already proposes a 3.26 percent, or I'm sorry, cent increase, just to balance the budget. The union is asking for an additional 4.26 cents on top of that, more than doubling the tax increase. All this while families are still recovering from storm damage and inflation. Most locally-employed citizens won't be getting raises this year, but they're being asked to fund one. At the same time, union speakers dropped pennies into a jar to symbolize their request, but nickels and dimes would have been more honest, because that's closer to the real cost to taxpayers. And what happens when funds fall short? Well, in January, this Board warned the school system of a $4.7 million clawback due to Helene. Yet, weeks later, the Buncombe School Board unanimously approved $3 million in new construction design contracts. Thank you.
Thank you Jim, you can share your remarks via email with us.
Thank you.
And I will make a blanket statement, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, correct me when you come to speak to us. We have Janet Burhoe-Jones, and then Lissa Pedersen.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a former teacher in Virginia, and I never got paid enough, and I don't think teachers ever will get paid enough. That shouldn't be why you're in there in the first place. Also, I was responsible for giving results, transparency in the programs that the education people get paid to do. And I don't think the county has done enough of that. I've asked for reports, never received them. I've asked for the parks and rec expense on the Easter egg hunt for dogs that they had and funded after Helene. And so I think if these are the kind of decisions that are being made by our county leaders, look at the Parks and Rec schedule, you'll see it. Then there are problems with the leadership in the county. They had Easter egg hunts, they had bird walks, this is after Helene. They could not change their budget, even though they could have. In an emergency, you should be able to do that. They did not, and I'm very disappointed. I hope that the county commission will vote with their heads, not their hearts, when they're faced with the teachers, unions, and organizations, because as a former teacher, as I said, you'll never get paid enough. You need to be held accountable. And I'm sorry for what everybody's had to go through for Helene. I live in Swananoa, and it's still a big trashcan. So I don't see a whole lot going on out there. I'm sorry for your decisions that you've had to make, but it's an emergency still for a lot of us, and to raise taxes is not the answer. Listen, thank you.
Thank you. Lissa Pedersen, and then Carl Davis.
Hello everybody, thank you for being here, thanks for advocating for our public education. I am Lissa Pedersen. I'm a public teacher in the Buncombe County Schools, have been a public teacher, coming on 15 years in the Buncombe County Schools. We We know that this is the problem with the state. The state undercuts and underfunds public education over and over and over again, and yet they give money for the opportunity scholarship. I was talking to somebody who works at a school that accepts opportunity scholarships. They didn't realize that, that that is being fully funded, whereas the public schools are being underfunded. So you could make a million bazillion tremillion dollars and still get money from the state, up to forty-five percent of what they do for this average for our students in the public schools. And almost, as my records show, almost fourteen percent of people do make more than two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, taking that money away from us. However, that's the problem. I got a minute left. We here, people are talking about, "Don't raise my taxes." We're talking about an average of a hundred and twenty dollars on an average house. And if you're lucky enough to own a house in Buncombe County, lucky us, and a hundred and twenty dollars a year, did I say a month? A year is only about less than, you know, about twenty dollars, right? I'm an art teacher. So anyway, I, I pay extra for everything. I pay extra for my groceries. I pay extra for my utilities. I pay for extra for my gas. I pay extra for my car. I pay for extra for everything. We can pay a little extra for our schools. We pay that as teachers. We buy snacks for our kids. We buy supplies for our kids. We can pay that for our schools. Buncombe County has a homeowner grant. If you make eighty percent or less of the area median income, that's seventy K right now, apply for it. You'll get three hundred to five hundred dollars off your yearly taxes. That will cover that increase. If you are sixty-five or a hundred percent disabled, you can get up to fifty percent off of your property assessment.
Thank you, Lissa. You can share your remarks with us via email. Carl Davis, followed by Christina Mason.
Thank you. My name is Carl Davis. I'm a parent of two kids in the Asheville City School System. I'm also a tax policy analyst by training, and I work as the research director at the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy. I want to put one piece of context on your radar, both for your consideration today, but also to inform how you think about your role as leaders in this community moving forward. We live in a state where the overwhelming trend of the last decade has been toward lower and lower state-level taxes. State income tax cuts since 2013, they've been very top-heavy. But even for low-income families, they're totaling about three hundred and sixty dollars a year on average. The vast majority of people in Buncombe County are paying significantly less state-level tax today than they ever have. And we have yet another income tax cut taking effect January first. My read of the IRS data for Buncombe County is that we're going to see our state tax bill fall by twenty-five million dollars next year. If you take a little bit longer-term view of things, looking at rate cuts that have happened since 2021, the cut's about a hundred million dollars per year in lower state taxes for us. When state taxes fall, and when they fall this dramatically, a very common result we see again and again is that local governments respond in part by raising property taxes. The hard reality is with this tax-cutting path we're on, especially in Raleigh, but in Washington, D.C., too, we need to accept that we, as a community, are more on our own than ever here. If we want to have great schools, it's increasingly going to be up to us to pay for it. We're headed toward a future, frankly, of higher local taxes, not just in Buncombe County, but all across the state. And the localities that realize that first and accept it the soonest are going to be in the strongest position for the long haul with better-funded schools, better-funded amenities, and better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Mason, followed by Mary Grayden.
Hello again. I'm Christina Mason, an Asheville City Schools parent, and my son Henry is a rising third grader and an exceptional child. He actually just got his I E P on Monday. I want to describe some of the human cost of underfunding our schools. Some of you are under the false impression that rightsizing the districts can be accomplished mostly by not refilling vacancies. That's not true. And also, have you ever worked or tried to get services somewhere that was super understaffed? We can expect class sizes to go way up as we lay off teachers and cut I As. Our employees are going to be stretched too thin. That hurts enrollment. But more importantly, it shortchanges the kids who stay. It worsens the achievement gap. Each and every cent that you raise property taxes can save fifty or more jobs, which means that students like my son, who's about to start receiving pull-out services, could continue to get served. Henry and students like him should not be the collateral damage of your budget. Some of this county's most disadvantaged, vulnerable kids, including minorities, get their education in public schools. Most are not going to charters or taking private school vouchers. When you give our public schools too little, you widen the achievement gap. Today is a day to ask the people of Buncombe County to dig deep because these kids shouldn't have to. They're survivors of Helene as much as any property owner, and their needs matter, too. Without enough money, Buncombe County Schools says it's facing a hundred to a hundred and fifty layoffs. Asheville City Schools has slated twenty-eight and a half individual staff for layoffs. Only five of those people will be retirements. Another two hundred people in Asheville City Schools, primarily classified staff, are slated to have their hours drastically cut. These are people of color. These are people working two to four jobs to make ends meet. Their jobs have been very tough to fill. They're pretty thankless because the hours and the wages suck. Our custodians, school nutritionists, bus drivers, and I As aren't doing these jobs for the money. Our students are going to suffer if you tax too little. People who serve our students are going to suffer. It's not fair. Don't fail us. Give our kids at least two cents.
Thank you, Christina. Mary Grayden, and then Claire Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Mia Grayden. I've lived in Asheville for four years with a two-year gap in between. But I am a North Carolina native. I am the proud graduate of public school system in Wake County. My daughter went to Johnson County Schools, and then we moved her up to Washington, D.C., where she went to Arlington City Schools. Because of my husband's job, we have moved around a lot. And the reason we are now in Asheville is we are retired. We have lived in cities where the tax rate is a lot, lot higher than it is here in Asheville City or Buncombe County. And by having a higher tax rate, those last two years, my daughter was in school in Arlington. She received a fifty times greater education than she did in here, in North Carolina. We have got to quit shortchanging our students. This isn't a problem for the city, county. It's going all the way up to the state. We need to have the funding put there. We need to be, we need to be proactive. We need to be reaching out to our senators and our representatives. I do not see having a tax increase as a huge burden. But then again, I am retired. We live on a fixed income. We watch how the markets are doing every day. But I'm still willing, without a child in school in this area, to put up the money that is needed so that all children, which is a fundamental right to get a quality education, get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Claire Bailey, Maya McDermott.
Hi, I'm Claire Bailey. I'm a Nashville City Schools alum and the mom of two students at Jones Elementary School, and I'm asking you to fully fund both school districts. And I'm asking you to please restore the twelve cent tax. I say that as a homeowner whose house was seriously damaged in Hurricane Helene. I'm asking you to tax me more. I spoke at the town hall last week about my worry that Asheville families are going to leave if the quality of our public schools go down. That is a very real fear and a very real possibility. But what I want to talk about tonight is what a fiscal year actually is. Because to adults, it sounds like pages on a calendar or columns of assets and liabilities. But what we're discussing is a significant portion of a child's life. One fiscal year is one-fifth of a five-year-old's life. That is a huge portion in which they might not get the support they need, the resources they need, the opportunities, the experiences. If there aren't sufficient support staff, if they don't have the individualized detention that they need, if the specialist hours are cut, et cetera. One-tenth of a child's life, one fifteenth of a child's life, whatever portion it is, it's too much for us to be talking about it as if it's just dollars and cents. This is their day-to-day lives. And so I don't think we should be calling it a fiscal year. That's not what it is to the kids. It's not a fiscal year. It is a foundation upon which so much depends. And I am begging you to fully fund the foundation that their futures are being built upon. Because we all know that you cannot expect a foundation that is not properly laid to have a building stand upon it. So this is not just fiscal year twenty-six. This is a significant chunk of our children's lives with repercussions for years to come and for future generations even. So tax us. Do what you need to do. Just fully fund the foundation that our children deserve and need. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Maya McDermott, and then Cameron McElrath.
Hello, my name is Maya McDermott. I've been in front of you now three times to talk about what school budgets will do to me and our schools. So we are now here to say, please, please, do not cut our school teachers and our school happiness. I can't stress enough the effects this will have, especially on my orchestra class and our learning. If budget cuts happen, we will lose six teachers, including Mr. Keel, who has been a role model to me throughout my high school education. To think about going into junior year without him and without orchestra makes me want to break down and stop trying. Yet I'm here, and I'm prepared to continue to stand in front of you for months to come and fight for my happiness and the future of our, of our state and our world. Please vote the right way.
Thank you, Maya. Cameron McElrath, and then Sadie Grogan.
My name is Cameron McElrath, and I have spoken to you on a prior occasion about the school's budget and how it would affect me. As a student at Asheville High School, this budget will directly affect students coming in and currently in Asheville High Schools, or Asheville City Schools, sorry. There are teachers out there that are role models to our students, and they affect our students' future, our future adults, and the future workers of America in good ways and bad. Students like me can have their safe place in schools completely ripped away, and in doing that, could hurt students and teachers alike. Have you ever met a student that's been directly affected by budget cuts? It's not a great feeling to know and see you're a safe place, get booted out, and not being able to do anything about it. You have the choice to make a vote and make a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Sadie Grogan, and then Kelly Spencer.
Hello, I am from Buncombe County Early College at A B Tech, and I stand before you today to emphasize the truth that should, that should be left self-evident. Cutting school funding is not only short-sighted, but it's profoundly detrimental to our college future, collective, sorry. Education is the cornerstone of a thriving society. And when we reduce our, sorry, our investment in schools, we compose not only the quality of instruction, but also the opportunities to help, available to help every student in particular. Cutting funds means fewer teachers, larger class sizes, outdated material, and erosion of essential programs such as arts, science, and mental health support that helps students grow into well-rounded individuals. If we don't build a strong future by weakening the foundation of our education, every dollar saved by slashing education budget costs us more in the long run. Lower education, lower graduation rates, decreased earning potential, and even increased crime rates. Put simply, schools cut does not save money. They shift the burden into the future. We must recognize education not as an expense, but as an investment, one that pays exponential returns. Our future of students and teachers should not be left to someone who loves the poorly educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Spencer, and then Tommy Shimrock.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Moore Spencer. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this night to speak to you. I'm a parent of two young children, one in first grade and a rising kindergartner. I'm also a full-time professor and have been a member of this community for almost twenty years now. I'm here this evening, as so many of us are, to ask you to fully fund our schools. I've been following this budget process closely over the past few months, attending budget retreats and delegation meetings. And at this point, it's quite disheartening that the option to restore the two-cent supplemental tax does not seem to be included in this budget. And as I understand it, isn't being offered as a separate vote. If you do not restore this tax, it will mean significant cuts to student-facing positions and hurt our lowest-paid district staff. If there is a way to motion for this tax to be considered, I urge one of you to do it. The public deserves to know who stands for investing in public education. I've heard concerns about raising taxes in the name of equity, concerns I personally share. I understand and really appreciate the instinct to protect our most vulnerable community members. But that conversation is incomplete if we don't also address the deep inequities already built into our current tax system. The Just Accounting for Health study by Urban Three found that more than fifty-two million dollars in property value, much of it in high-value homes, went untaxed just a few years ago. If we're serious about equity, we should be getting creative about modernizing our assessments and ensuring the tax appeals are accessible to those who need them most, not underfunding our public schools. Many of you in this room got remarkably creative after Hurricane Helene to help those in need. Please, let's bring that same creativity to this moment. And let's be clear, funding schools is equity work. Cutting education budgets hurts all students, but the most harm falls again and again on the same communities: students of color, students with disabilities, and students from low-income families. These are the very students that many of you claim to be concerned about, so please match your values with your actions tonight. We heard in Dr. Maggie's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. You can email us the rest of your comments. Tommy Shimrock and Natalie Dorsey.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Shimrock, and I'm speaking here tonight as a parent. I speak tonight to unite with the community of students, staff, community members. Two hundred and fifty strong marching tonight. Your overflow room is full downstairs on the first floor in support of a real, honest, bold budget for our schools in Buncombe County and Asheville City. Week after week, for some time now, we have spoken to you, with you, attempted to hear from you to try and figure out what in the world is going on in Asheville and Buncombe County of all places. In 2025, after a devastating hurricane, with this strange, unwise, uncaring, unprogressive idea that we might not fund our schools at a minimum, much less at the levels our kids need, let's establish a fact: Public schools are the backbone of our democracy and our communities. They're where we build that which we wish to see in the world around us. They are where multicultural coalitions of students and teachers and staff across all socioeconomic lines struggle together to grow and be better than we are, than you were, than those before us all were as well. What we are building as a community in Asheville and Buncombe County is not the status quo. We are not fighting for merely crumbs anymore. We are building the sort of coalitions that will create and fight for what we all need and want with our schools and elsewhere in this county. And we are looking for those of you who want to be partners in this, in this here and now, to start to write together a new chapter for these mountains and rivers and the people that call them home. So pause, think, look at the faces, run them through your minds of the kids, the families, the workers that need their schools to be so much more than a place with four walls and a roof. And then demand more tonight at your vote, more, 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 for all of us. They all, we all deserve the best schools and students and families, more than students and families could ever possibly imagine, because that's what we're doing. So what are you all doing?
Thank you. Natalie Dorsey, followed by Annie Wolf.
Hey, I'm Natalie Dorsey. I'm the parent of two kids in Buncombe County Schools. And I'm also showing up here a little sweaty and, because today, not only just speaking about how I support public schools, I went and supported public schools today. I worked at a field day, and I marched around downtown. So I'm asking you today to not just with your words, support public schools, but with your actions to also support public schools. Also, I'm here because Liz Wayland, Liz Wayland Talent, who is the owner of the orange peel, was not able to be here because she is with her sixth grader in a ceremony. She wanted me to say, I feel it's my obligation to speak yes, to speak to you as a voter, parent, and small business owner and arts leader in Buncombe County. I strongly urge you to fully fund our public schools. The revenue shortfall that we are facing is a result of sales tax loss from a natural disaster, and I believe it is business owners and property owners like myself who are better equipped to step up and make small sacrifice through a marginal tax increase to bear this. Placing that burden on the backs of teachers and, worst of all, voiceless public school students is simply unacceptable and shameful. I understand that there will be those property owners who need an exemption to even a marginal tax increase. However, I believe there are many valid ways for you to protect the more vulnerable home or business owners via exceptions, grandfathering programs, nonprofit relief grants, and so on. Please, rise to the occasion tonight, meet this challenge in our community, and deliver a solution that does not permanently harm and burden our already suffering public schools. Our public schools do far more than educate. They feed, provide, enrichment- They feed, provide enrichment, stabilize, and care for the most vulnerable children in our community. They are the backbone of compassion and community for the very most at-risk, vulnerable people in Asheville. Protecting them is a value we claim to hold dear in Buncombe County. We have elected seven Democrats to this commission because we believe in protecting those with the highest needs first.
Thank you. Annie Wolf, and then Brooke Shembry.
Hi, my name's Annie Wolf. I have four children. They have all been in public school. They are 25 years old, 23, 18, and 16. They went to Hawke Creek Elementary, Reynolds Middle, and Reynolds High School. Two of them were on an IEP at a time, and two were on a 504 plan. It was devastating to watch how dramatically COVID impacted our precious schools. The availability of support and teachers and administrators diminished during that year, and the impact was deeply felt. They weren't the same, there weren't the same resources for our younger two that there were for our older two. It was heartbreaking to feel and to witness. Our incredible schools made it, and they displayed a brilliant resilience that I have always seen in them, but it hurt. That was a brief five years ago, and to imagine taking away funding from the current budget is impossible. Children are our most vulnerable demographic. This decision would be very difficult and extremely complicated if it only involved adults, but this decision directly impacts this community's children. When children are involved, it's not complicated. When children are involved, it is not difficult. We have to prioritize our children. Our public schools are a safe haven for children. These schools are where our children live their lives. Literally, our children spend a full-time adult's work week at their schools. Many are in athletics, which extends their day longer. To many children, the school is a home away from home. Our city is only as safe as our schools. Research shows that funding education decreases gun violence and decreases crime rates in the community. Funding education will benefit everyone, including public safety. It is inexcusable to take funding from the places where our children learn, meet their friends, have mentors, are safe, get fed, and become the people of our tomorrow. They are our entire future. We absolutely must be a community that puts kids first.
Thank you. Brooke Shembry, and then Samantha Acock.
Hello, my name is Brooke Shembry, and I am here to ask you to fully fund our public schools. I have three kids in Buncombe County Schools: a fifth grader at Fairview Elementary, a seventh grader at Kane Creek Middle School, and a 10th grader at Reynolds High School. Three years ago, we left Atlanta in search of a smaller town with more green space and a relaxed way of life. With three kids, finding a great school district was top priority, and we settled on Buncombe County. While we knew our kids would get what they needed academically here, we have been blown away by the sense of community and positive environment these schools have provided. The principals, teachers, and support staff are some of the best we've seen, and in my opinion, our schools are the greatest asset this county has. Without great schools, we would not be here, along with many others in our community. Our schools are wonderful, but they are stretched thin. Teachers do double duty as after-school club leaders. Sports coaches serve as school bus drivers for athletic events. Teachers buy school supplies for children who can't afford them, and front office staff are trained in diabetes management to care for my daughter because the nurse juggles multiple schools. The music programs, sports, AP classes, and special field trips may seem non-essential, but they provide opportunities for kids to learn new skills, pursue their interests, and find their place of belonging, keeping them engaged in school. I don't see how it's possible to cut a single dollar from our schools without negatively impacting our students. A few years ago, when we were planning our move to Buncombe County, my mother-in-law, a retired teacher, said, "Why would you move to North Carolina? They don't fund their public schools." Tonight, you have the opportunity to show the rest of the state that Buncombe County is different. You have the opportunity to show them that in Buncombe County, we put our students first. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're from AC Reynolds High School, Bo Rockets, and we're here to urge you to vote against these proposed budget cuts for the sake of our future in education, but also for other kids who aren't here to vote on this, and thank you.
Thank you all. Samantha Acock.
Hi, my name is Samantha Acock, and I teach kindergarten at Lucius Herring Elementary. I wanted to tell you about a learning expedition I piloted this year after becoming an outward-bound certified educator last summer. My kindergarteners explored the purpose of school, and in order to do so, they traveled to Asheville Middle, Asheville High, and UNC Asheville so they could really envision their future and what role school would play in it. My kindergarteners drew themselves attending middle school, high school, and college. Some of them even decided they would have to go to college twice. And they drew themselves as robot builders and archaeologists, police officers, and video game makers. They drew all of the things along the way that would help them gain the skills they needed to achieve that future, and they drew the things that would just help them have an enjoyable experience at school. But the truth is, if you don't vote to fully fund the budget tonight, or even motion for a fully funded budget at all, those programs won't exist by the time my students make it to middle school. Marcela won't be able to join orchestra because Franklin Keel's position and the entire strings program will be cut. Arbor won't have the opportunity for hands-on experience building robots before he goes to UNC Asheville with his best friend Owen, because our DLT positions and STEAM programs are already being cut, and they're only going to be cut more if you do not fully fund our budget. Malachi might not be able to run track, because who knows if you're going to find staff willing to take on the additional responsibility of coaching sports teams if budget cuts stretch them thinner and thinner. I need you to hear their dreams and their names, because their dreams and their future is what the cost of not fully funding our budget and increasing the ACS supplemental tax. So I urge each of you to think about your vote tonight and ask yourself, does this decision, in this room, right now, support students across Buncombe County in achieving their futures that they dream about, or will it deny them the program, skills, and support that they need in order to be successful? Because your vote will one way or another.
Thank you, Samantha. I see that we've had other folks from the overflow room join us that have not signed up to speak, so if anyone has joined us that would like the opportunity. And when you get to the podium, please state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sonia Marcus, and I'm a homeowner in the city of Asheville, and I'm here as a member of the I-26 Citizens Coalition, and I just wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you to all of you for the work that you did on behalf of the community as a whole to support our efforts to urge NCDOT staff to reconsider some of the recent design changes they've made to this project. So it takes courage to do that, and it also takes attention to detail and time, and we want you to know how much we appreciate the work that you've put into this. And we're very hopeful that the conversation with NCDOT staff that's coming up on June 10th, and then the subsequent sessions that will follow, will be productive and fruitful, and that we'll look for good solutions that can be supported on all sides. Just as a reminder, of course, we still want to emphasize the urgency around having I-26 go under Patton Avenue and preserving that as an important bike, ped, and neighborhood-friendly corridor, but there are other fantastic suggestions that were made as part of the package of recommendations that we submitted that I think are really worthy of further consideration as well, partly because they're cost-saving and might allow us to reincorporate certain features that are important to many of us in the community. So thank you for your important work.
Thank you, Sonia. Are there others? Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Leanne Smith. I am a former librarian, media specialist with Buncombe County Schools for over 20 years. I started with Asheville City Schools as a digital lead teacher this school year, and I emailed each of y'all yesterday afternoon. In that email, I included some information from a nonpartisan data gathering think tank called North Carolina Public School Forum. You can find it by Googling it or by going to ncforum.org. The information that I sent you is very specific to Buncombe County. As you all probably know, there are 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. Buncombe ranks in the top 10 in ability to pay. However, we are in the bottom 20 in our funding effort toward public schools. This is embarrassing. I am here partly because way back in the day, several decades ago, North Carolina had a program called Master Teacher Fellows Program, and I realize that was at the state level, but that's part of the reason I'm here today. And I can tell you, from being in both school systems, wonderful, wonderful work is being done, and we do not want our students to experience another disaster. And not approving this fully-funded school budget would bring another disaster to our already downtrodden public school system. So thank you all for what you do and for working to make the right choice on behalf of our students.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak? Yes. Go ahead and just line up behind him so that you're ready to go.
Hi, my name's Nathan Lesnar. I have two students at Lucius Herring, and in the overflow room, I was just watching little Henry come up here, and I felt more inspired to be up here, and I don't think it's really something that's an ask for you guys. I think it's more of a kind of we demand sort of thing, so.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Andy Gardner, and I was not planning on doing this today. I want to say thank you to all the people that spoke. You guys really appreciate it, very inspiring, and thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to hear what everybody's got to say. I'm a small business owner, grew up in this town, went to Asheville High. My wife's first-grade teacher at IC Imagine Charter School. I have a son with an IEP who just got a 100 on his pre-calculus test at Cilsa. And, you know, I dropped out of high school, second half of my senior year, went to BCS, got my GED, and I can tell you that I've been in a lot of budget conversations, talked about a lot of money. People make it work. Figure it out. Some of this damage around here got caused because things weren't built right to begin with. If we want to invest in this community, you've got to fix the problems from the bottom up. Worked on a lot of old houses in Montford. I've seen why they fail. They weren't built on solid ground. Let's do it. Let's make it happen. You guys have the choice. You've got the power. Figure out how to make it work, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Catherine Garrison. I am a teacher at both Avery's Creek Elementary and Glenn Arden Elementary School in Buncombe County. I'm also a product of public schools all the way from elementary school to university and believe strongly in them. I too wasn't going to speak, but I was listening to comments, and there's a couple of things that struck me. Number one, we haven't really talked about a teacher's typical day. And I am an ESL teacher, and so I go in and support the regular grade teachers throughout their day. I have 65 students at Avery's Creek. I have about 34 at Glenn Arden, and I see how hard these teachers work. Both schools are very different. Avery's Creek is considered, I think it's a D-grade school, and Glenn Arden's considered like the rich school, and yet, in both schools, throughout the day, there are kids crying in the hallways. There are EC teachers coming to calm them down. There are students that have behavioral issues that if there's assistant there, they'll help them out. If there's no assistant, they have to call the assistant principal. I'm telling you, it is more than just teaching content. We are there to help these students learn the behaviors that they need to be citizens of this country. We are there to teach them how to be better characters, better friends. We are there to inspire them to learn. We are there to inspire students that come from poverty or low income to be more than just what they think they can be. I spoke with the elementary school teacher, was talking about the different jobs, robot making and whatever. My students are telling me they want to be truck drivers, right? So I'm there saying, hey, if you learn to speak English well, and you continue on with your school, and you keep studying hard, you can go to college, and there's a possibility that you can do a different job than truck driving. Like, your possibilities open up. So we are the backbone of society. We are-
Thank you.
Not to be dismissed.
Are there others who wish to speak in chamber?
Good evening. My name is Jason Gilmore. I am a specialized teacher at AMS, and I have three kids in ACS. And we had just moved from Connecticut. I grew up in Massachusetts. I spent 25 years in California, and all three of those states have at least double the per pupil spending that North Carolina does. And, of course, the taxes are also at least double than what is here. So if you look at that per pupil spending and compare it with the tax rate, we've got room to grow, you know? I'm glad, we came here for a reason, that it's a lower cost of living. However, you can't cut, we can't run a school on less. They're running schools on a lot more, and they still have similar issues, depending on where you teach, but I'm telling you, being in the school, the teachers cannot work harder than they are. You will risk, you know that the schools work right now. You take less, the risk that you take in running the schools on less is so high, you know that you're going to lose teachers. You will lose teachers. I might be one of them. I don't want to work in a system that hurts kids. I want to work in a system that I thought that I was going to, that we were moving to, that supports, supports, and is open-minded, and is there for the kids. I want to be there for the kids, but I will not work in a system that hurts kids. Please vote to pass the tax.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? May I have a show of hands of who remains? Okay, I think you might be the next to last.
My name is Kinsley Herbst. I'm a first-grade teacher at Isaac Dixon Elementary. I've been teaching there for five years. I'm here today not just as an educator, but as a witness of what it looks like every day, those consequences for what you vote for. I am in a classroom every single day. I can tell you exactly what it looks like. It would take way more than two minutes. Lucky for you, you're not my fiancee. You just have to hear that every day. Every single dollar that you guys cut from public education is a dollar stolen from our future. It's a dollar stolen from children. You are stealing from kids. I understand needing to balance a budget, but I'm begging you not to do it on the backs of my seven-year-olds. And the fact that most of you aren't even looking at me right now, like, this is a choice you are making. You are choosing to prioritize something over children. You are choosing to take money from kids who can't speak English, from kids who don't have a good home. This isn't what I've written down, but I've gotten really angry. Less money in schools means less. It means you have less teachers, you have less kids in public schools, you have less resources, less support, and less interventions. We're not asking for luxuries I don't want to raise. I just want my kids to have the support they need. I want to be able to come there and give them what they need, and you are making it impossible for me to do that. You are choosing to make my job harder. You are choosing, if you don't pass a fully-funded budget, if you choose to not raise taxes, you are choosing to make public education worse. taxes, you are choosing to make public education worse. That is your choice. Everyone has been nice. You need to hear it. I handed out apple cards for every single one of you. I encouraged other people to vote for you. Almost all of you ran on public education. And then to do this? You are proving that you are a liar, and you do not care about kids.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep talking.
No, you may not. Your time is up. You may email us the rest of your comments.
Why do you get to decide that your time is more important than mine?
Would you please remove her?
Want you to know how that looks.
I believe, I believe we had one additional hand raised. Are there others? Okay, I saw one here, and then there's one behind Ms. Pedersen. And, okay. So the one behind Ms. Pedersen was up, and then in the, I think that, is that Liza? And I saw one other in addition to Ms. Kelly. All right, yes. Your, your hand was up first. Yes, and then we'll go with Ms. Kelly, and there were some others after her.
My name is Michelle Hale, and I'm a Buncombe County and Asheville City resident, and a past cafeteria public school worker. And I'm here to ask for the full funding necessary for our public schools, which includes sufficient budgets for infrastructure and repairs, support staff, bus drivers, janitors, cafeteria workers, special ed needs, school nurses and counselors, technology that keeps up with society, and more. These and more are all necessary to provide a basic education with equitable access to all our children. As your constituents, we expect fully funded public schools. The right to equality education is not only for some children, but all children. Continually cutting down K through 12 public schools harms our students' education and places that burden on the backs of these children. This will carry through to their adult lives. As a lifelong NC resident and product of public education, our students deserve way better. This is not a debate. This is what today's children need and our future depends on. A modern and ever-changing world demands a modern and ever-changing education. Public schools must keep up with advancements and modern expectations. For decades now, NC has ranked in the bottom five of all 50 states of education. This is not only embarrassing, but also unacceptable for the state of NC. We need to be more competitive in order to keep up with our nation and build a serious job market for our future. We have to stop setting kids up for failure and start setting them up for success. Helene has reminded us what community can look like and how we must take care of each other. We live in a time where education is a threat.
Thank you.
By federal and state governments.
Thank you, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up.
Need to depend on the county and our community. Thank you.
Your time is up. Ms. Kelly. Who had their, who else had their hands up? Can you raise them really high? Because I. And Ms. Churchill. And you'll follow her. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, county commissioners. Thank you for coming here tonight and hearing all the perspectives that have been presented before you. I'm speaking tonight as an individual, not as a representative of our Asheville City Schools Board. I also was not planning on speaking tonight, but I recognize my unique perspective and my relationship to Asheville City Schools. I've been involved with Asheville City Schools for nearly a decade. I served as an IA. I'm a mom of three, and I'm a partner of an Asheville City Schools teacher. Two out of three of my daughters have felt the disruption and detriment of rightsizing our district. They've been impacted by school closures. At the time that Asheville primary was closed, a group of parents was told to come to you and to ask for what we needed. Tonight, you're hearing very clearly what this community needs. We desperately need to fund our schools. Increasing our taxes with the ask of two additional cents to restore our taxes to the previous level is still providing our children with bare bones. It's not overstaffing our schools. It is the bare minimum to have a profound impact on our, on our children as our teachers continue to work tirelessly each and every day. My partner and I, as teachers, we both live paycheck to paycheck, even tighter than that. We get help from my parents every single month. Raise my taxes, please. I will gladly pay more each year. I'll, I'll work a third job.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Amy Churchill. Are there others? Right, right now, you might be the last one, Amy.
Hey there. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Wanted to just say good evening, Chairman Edwards, Chairwoman Edwards, and fellow commissioners. I'd like to also say that even though I am the Buncombe County School Board Vice Chair, I am speaking currently now as a taxpayer and mom of a former Buncombe County School I'm here to urge you to make a firm commitment to fully fund our public schools. As local leaders, you know firsthand that education is at the heart of a thriving community. But too often, our schools are being asked to stretch limited resources beyond reason. Fully funding our schools means more than keeping the lights on, means ensuring every student has access to a safe, supportive, and high-quality learning environment, means competitive pay for our employees so we can attract and keep them, means funding for counselors, school resource officers, mental health support, and up-to-date facilities. This is not just an education issue, it's an economic one. Strong schools attract families, grow local businesses, and reduce long-term cost in public safety, healthcare, and social services. Decisions you make tonight at the local level will have a direct impact on our classrooms. I know budgets are tight. I don't want to be in your shoes. But our students cannot wait. Investing in public education is the most effective long-term investment that this county can make in the future for everyone in our community. Let's give our schools what they need, not just to get by, but to truly succeed.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening during public comment? All right, thank you all for being here this evening. We do appreciate hearing from you. All right, we will move into our first and maybe only item of old business, and John Hudson is making his way to us for the FY26 budget adoption. Good evening, John.
Good evening, commissioners. Before we begin, I will ask interim attorney Kurt Euler to discuss General Statute 14-234.3.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. So what that statute basically does is it basically states that if you are serving on a nonprofit board, or you work as an executive director of a nonprofit board, and that board or that nonprofit organization will be getting funding, or you will be appropriating funds to that nonprofit through the budget process, that you need to recuse, or that you may have a conflict of interest and need to recuse yourself for votes, from voting on that specific item in regard to the nonprofit that you serve on a board. We have, as staff, have pulled you all, and I hope that we've gotten all of your various boards and nonprofit boards that you all serve on, and that what we would do is that if you did have a conflict, we could make a motion for you to recuse yourself, and then the remaining members of the board can vote on that specific line item. That would prevent you from having a conflict and running a foul of 14-234.3. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are here tonight for the fiscal year 2026 budget adoption. We began our work in January with a budget retreat for fiscal year 2026 under some of the most difficult circumstances we could have ever seen, where you agreed to focus on Helene recovery. We completed three work sessions this spring and presented the manager's recommended budget on May 6th with a required public hearing on May 20th. This evening, we are requesting adoption of the budget spending plan for fiscal year We have discussed the challenges related to budget planning post-disaster. These are highlighted here. Revenues are down. There are new costs we cannot avoid. And use of fund balance last year and projected use this year make further use of fund balance extremely difficult. Between the loss of revenue and the inability to use fund balance, this creates a deficit of around $25 million less than our fiscal year 25 amended budget. We also discussed how we responded to maintain fiscal sustainability and ensure provision of essential operations in this budget. We have reduced departmental operating budgets by $4.6 million, cutting back travel and training to what is essential and mandated, reducing contracts by working with vendors, and deferring maintenance and repair where possible. We are budgeting less than 100% of salaries to account for turnover and vacancies, and will stagger start dates of new hires where possible to save money. This results in savings of $7.5 million. Additionally, this budget does not add any new positions, of which we received 55 requests that would have added about $5 million in expenditures. Commissioners reduced community investments by $4.6 million, cutting affordable housing funding and grants to nonprofits that work with our community. We refinanced debt to save interest over time and have found $1.7 million in savings. We reduced our transfer by $500,000 to the Transportation Fund, but are still funding mountain mobility and ADA paratransit services as mandated by law. We are deferring over a dozen capital projects and chose only four new capital projects that will be debt financed, so costs will not be borne this year. Also, we received over $1.2 million more in vehicle requests than we are accommodating this year. So what's in this budget? This budget plan ensures funding for staffing so that 911 calls are answered and that paramedics are on ambulances to respond, that those ambulances will maintain or reduce their response time for emergencies. It will allow the county to conduct elections as required by law with municipal elections in the fall, followed by midterm primaries in the spring. It funds all library locations to be open in the coming year. This plan meets the demand for human services to include federally mandated programs such as Medicaid, food and nutrition services, foster care, and public health services. It meets permitting and planning needs for rebuilding and new construction as the community recovers. This plan provides continued funding for early childhood education. It also activates our long-term recovery work as we begin the journey back from the devastation our community suffered. We've made some changes to the budget since adoption. With feedback from the Board of Commissioners to reduce the impact of property taxes on our community, we've reduced the budget by $1.9 million by delaying our contribution to the trust fund for other post-employment retiree benefits. This expenditure reduction of $1.9 million directly reduces the recommended property tax rate increase from 3.26 to 2.9 cents for fiscal year 26. Should replacement revenue legislation pass, or we receive other infusion of revenues, we will revisit this contribution at that time. The fiscal year 2026 general fund budget is now $433,96,618. The property tax rate for 2026 will increase by 2.9 cents to 54.66 cents per $100 of appraised value, generating $15.2 million of additional property tax revenue. This will result in an annual increase of $101.50 on a home valued at $350,000, or $8.45 a month. With this tax rate change, revenues are now budgeted at $433.1 million, with property tax the largest revenue source at 66%, followed by intergovernmental revenue and sales tax each at 11%. These three revenue sources make up 88% of the general fund revenues for fiscal year 26. Revenues are down $11.5 million from last year, with property tax the largest decrease. We also expect to see lower sales tax earnings and investment earnings. The only gains we see in revenue are from permits and fees, which are largely restricted by use to pay for the administration of that service. Property tax is the only lever that the commission holds to increase revenue. This $15.2 million generated by a property tax increase will balance this budget and does not create any revenue to contribute or add to fund balance. Education remains the largest expenditure by function in the general fund at 28%. Public safety makes up 23%. Human services, 22% of the general fund. Public safety function is up $2.5 million. This functions where a large portion of health insurance and retirement costs are borne, as well as less turnover. Additionally, safety equipment for law enforcement that was nearing end of life is being replaced. Cultural and recreational function increases largely driven by increased costs in property insurance and investment equipment to ensure safety at park facilities impacted by the The decrease shown in general government reflects the reductions in strategic partnerships, capital outlay to include vehicles, and education. All told, expenditures in this budget decreased 2.5% from the fiscal year 25 amended budget. This budget recommends a cost-of-living adjustment for county employees consistent with the calculation in the personnel ordinance of the two-year average of the Consumer Price Index calculated at 3.09%. It also recommends reclassifications of two vacancies. This is a six-year lookback at K-12 education funding for local current expense for the two school systems. As a reminder, the unrestricted revenue growth rate was the basis the county developed for use in fiscal year 19 for the annual appropriation required for our public school systems. This was intended to be a sustainable method of funding education without needing to find alternate revenue sources. From fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2024, unrestricted revenue grew not quite 10%, while K-12 funding increased to 30% as the commissioners attempted to meet the needs of the schools as COVID era one-time funding ended. As revenues have declined this year, this budget reduces the local current expense from fiscal year 2025, adopted by the same percentage of reduction in unrestricted revenue, a reduction of 3.49%. This results in a total decrease to K-12 schools by $4.1 million. AB Tech also receives a decrease in funding by the same measure of negative 3.49% from $8.7 million to $8.4 million. This results in approximately $3,873 in local funding per pupil in K-12 public schools. In addition to the local current expense, Asheville City Schools is estimated to receive an additional $16.5 million via their supplemental taxing district, consisting of $12.3 million property tax and $4.2 million sales tax, which increases the per pupil local funding to $7,562 for students in that district, almost double that of BCS per pupil spending. This, the Asheville City Schools taxing district has increased, revenue has increased about 13.5% over the last four years, about $2 million of more over. last four years, about $2 million more over that period of time per year. Among the items on tonight's agenda are a resolution that the Board of Commissioners will consider to restore funding to fiscal year 25 levels. Pending legislation is on its way through the state legislature to allow for use of Article 39 sales tax, currently restricted to school capital funding to be used for school operations. There are two bills with this language, and pending passage of one of them, the resolution would bring forward a budget amendment in the new fiscal year to restore $4.1 million of local current expense using the sales tax revenue for this purpose. I might have missed on the last slide that the commission is moving the supplemental sales tax rate, supplemental tax rate for the Asheville City Schools to 11 cents from 10.62.
Can you, are you rounding up on that 1.216 number? Because it's 1.215 by my math.
Which, which number are you asking?
It says 121.6. It's 121.5 on my calculator, but I'm using an iPhone.
It is rounding.
Okay.
Each of those three numbers are rounded, so when you add the one decimal, there is rounding.
Thank you for that clarification.
This budget provides $5.7 million for discretionary community investments. The board will also approve spending for JCPC pass-through funding. Five capital projects to include three ambulances are recommended to be debt-funded at a total of $4 million. A reminder that these, that there will be no impact on the general fund budget for these projects in fiscal year 26. For vehicles, we will replace 10 sheriff's patrol vehicles with outfits and lease three replacement trucks. Two hybrid trucks will be leased for the permits and inspection department, while an EV will be leased for solid waste and budgeted in that fund. Regarding the taxing districts, this budget recommends six tax increases for fire districts: Anka Candler from 12 to 13.5, French Broad from 22.2 to 22.7, Reynolds from 11.24 to 13.11, Swananoa from 14 to 15, Upper Hominy from 19 to 20.6, and West Buncombe from 13.5 to 15 cents per $100 of assessed value, and a tax increase for the Asheville City Schools supplemental taxing district from 10.62 to 11 cents per $100 of assessed value. The total of all annual funds, including air quality, is $623,780,710. We discussed the changes to the general fund already. There are changes to two other funds. We have finalized debt service costs, and this added $350,000 to the solid waste enterprise fund for debt payments for the new compactor, which we will appropriate additional fund balance in that fund to balance. Also, we received notification of reduced state revenue for the 911 special revenue fund, and will appropriate $38,100 of fund balance in that fund to maintain the budgeted The School Capital Commission met in April and recommended 17 projects for pay-go funding using $11 million of sales tax revenue. Two projects totaling $2.5 million are recommended for Asheville City Schools, a security project and bleacher repairs at the Asheville High School Stadium. Fifteen projects totaling $8.5 million are recommended for Buncombe County Schools. Roofing projects at 10 schools are slated for $4.3 million. There's a security project that will address needs at multiple schools. Tennis court replacement at TC Robertson High is recommended at $1.5 million. An athletic field renovation at Valley Springs Middle is recommended at $1.5 million. There is also a lighting replacement at the Aquatic Center Pool for $225,000. Are there any questions about these projects?
John, I don't.
These projects are questions just about the budget in general.
Well, these projects.
About these projects specifically.
Okay.
Yeah, these projects will be approved with the capital projects ordinance as it is written today. I just want to ensure that there were no questions about the specific projects. And that these are the projects.
I'll just share as the school capital chair that this was a unanimous decision with our school capital commission to support all these projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Go ahead, John.
This is an updated five-year projection of the School Capital Fund, using the $11 million for pay-as-you-go projects from the last slide, and moving $4.1 million of revenue to operating for schools as the commissioner's resolution recommends based on the pending legislation. Even allowing for $10 million in pay-go over the next four years, there would still be $10.3 million remaining in fund balance at year-end 2030 without any future bond proceeds. Are there any questions about the capacity of the sales tax of the School Capital Fund?
Doesn't appear so.
There are two budget ordinances requiring adoption. The first is the annual funds ordinance, which establishes the annual budget for all annual funds as well, and includes the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule, the Health and Human Services billing guide, and the Position Classification and Pay Plan. These documents are posted with the agenda. The second ordinance is the Capital Projects Funds Ordinance. This makes updates to the multi-year funds to align with any appropriations from the annual funds and to establish recommended capital projects and grant projects. This includes approval and adoption of the recommended School Capital Fund projects. Per the MOA with the state, there is a resolution for budgeting strategies in the opioid settlement fund. Additionally, there is the resolution for use of the Article 39 sales tax revenues. The requested action from the board is to approve the two ordinances and the two resolutions. Are there any questions?
John, thank you for this reminder of how we got to where we are this evening. Could you share again the information that you and Sam Rennell presented on the relative funding effort information from the North Carolina Public Schools Forum?
Yes, the North Carolina Public Schools Forum looks at, they, they create a model to look at tax revenues and even, and even those revenues across counties. Counties collect, counties collect revenues differently and have varying tax rates, so they're attempting to, to have a, create a tax rate for each jurisdiction that may be different than the actual tax rate that the, that the county has. They're also, they also provide information on assessments and have, and have, look at assessed value. For the year in question, which was 2022, I believe, the model that they use actually said that Buncombe County should have $5 billion more in assessed value to collect taxes on. Additionally, from, from their model, they, they said that we should have a tax rate 14.5 cents higher than we did that year, and that would have generated $78 million more in property tax revenue than we had in, in that year. Additionally, they say with other unrestricted revenues that we should have had, that we should have had $106 million more in unrestricted revenue that we would have the ability to pay for schools, and that we should, that we should be paying schools that $106 million more. And because, and since we were not, they calculated, they calculated what we were doing and ranked us 79th based on these standards. Of the, of, of the highest-paying counties per pupil spending, most of them were ranked in the bottom 20, with even, with Dare County the highest per pupil expenditure in the, in the state and ranked 99 in, in their relative funding effort on this, in this model.
Thank you, John. I think the takeaway for us that day, I think the refresher was really helpful, was that that data is based on a lot of assumptions and a lot of incorrect assumptions at that. And at the, the, the big takeaway, though, is looking at that actual per pupil rank where we were in the top 10.
Yes.
Correct. Does anyone have further questions regarding that relative funding?
Not that.
Okay.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions. You touched on this, John, but I just was hoping you, the property values, I think I've heard you say that typically our property values go up around 3%, 3.5% or so a year. So can you speak to that and what we're looking at currently post-a-lean?
Yes. In a non-revaluation year, we generally see natural growth and increase of property values for, toward our revenue of about 3% to 3.5% increase, so that we would have a natural increase in property tax revenue year over year without any change in the tax rate. Based on the, the assessed value we used for last year's budget versus this year, it's actually a 1.8% decrease in property, in the assessed property values we're, we're looking at. And our property assessment office continues to refine those. It can, it, it, there are appeals on the way, and we expect that it may go a bit lower than that.
Then also, I was trying to take some notes when you were talking, you were speaking to the supplemental tax, the Asheville City Schools supplemental tax, and that tax growth over the past few years. Can you just state that again, how much?
Yes, that's about, it's $2 million more now than it was in four, four years ago. It's about 13.5% increase over that four-year period of natural growth for that, for that taxing revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there other questions? Okay.
I will need Mr. Euler to have a recusal, recusal done, votes on recusal's done.
Thank you.
Yes, I think, I think prior to adopting the entire budget, we would want to handle those specific appropriations within the budget where board members may have a potential conflict.
Correct.
And I believe Mr. Whiteside.
Commissioner Whiteside has the motions.
I have four motions that affect three commissioners. The first one is conflict motion Economic Development Coalition. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, I move to recuse Chair Edwards from voting on the Economic Development Coalition appropriation in the fiscal year 2026 budget due to the conflict of interests of being a board member of the EDC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. All in favor of recusal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The second one is open doors of Asheville.
Commissioner Whiteside, it might be helpful that the next thing that we should do then is vote for the appropriation to the EDC with the remaining board members who are not recused.
Let's do that.
I move to approve the EDC appropriation as set forth in the 2026 budget.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Conflict motion, the next one is open doors of Asheville. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, I move to recuse Commissioner Moore from voting on the open doors of Asheville appropriations in fiscal year 2026 budget due to conflict of interests of being a board member of Open Doors of Asheville.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. All in favor of recusal?
No, let me move.
Oh.
Yeah. I move to approve the open doors of Asheville appropriation.
No, we have to vote on the recusal first.
Oh, the recuse, I'm sorry.
Then we'll come back there.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your patience with us as we do this. All in favor of recusal of Martin Moore, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Sarah, for the record, abstain from that vote, and I think Amanda did from hers as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Now I move to approve the open doors of Asheville appropriation as set forth in the 2026 budget.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Ball, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, conflict motion Arts Asheville AVL. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, I move to recuse Commissioner Moore from voting on the Arts AVL appropriation in the fiscal year 2026 budget due to the conflict of interests of being a board member of Arts AVL.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. All in favor of the recusal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Now, I move to approve Arts, the Arts AVL appropriation as set forth in the 2026 budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. All in favor of Arts AVL? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. All right.
Now, this is the last.
I have one more.
Motion, Vaya Health. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, I move to recuse Commissioner Sloan from voting on the Vaya Health appropriations in the fiscal year 2026 budget due to the conflict of interests of being a board member of the, of the Vaya Health.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, I heard Commissioner Moore first. All in favor of recusal?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We may move forward with the motion.
And I, I move to approve the Vaya Health appropriation as set forth in the 2026 budget.
Second, Commissioner Horton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloan. That motion carries.
Just, just to make sure, do, do any other board members have any potential conflict with any of the other appropriations in the budget?
No, I serve, I don't think so, because I've mentioned this before, but I serve on the Land of Sky Regional Council, and I serve on the Buncombe County TDA.
I do not believe that there would be a conflict.
All right, just to confirm.
But thank you, I just wanted to be sure, so.
And just to be clear, I do not serve on the board of Reynolds Volunteer Fire Department. I am just a volunteer firefighter.
Right, you would have no decision-making, and you would not be covered under the conflict statute, isn't it? As more or less a volunteer, so. But thank you all for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Euler. All right, Commissioners, we have several actions that we need to take tonight. The first is the annual funds budget ordinance. So let me, that's a great question. Let me ask just a point of order, Mr. Euler. We have the budget ordinance, we have the capital ordinance, the resolution directing the expenditure of opioid settlement fund, and then the resolution proactively approving Article 39 funds. Is that the order we need to take those in?
I would recommend that you do the resolution regarding the appropriation of the Article 39, or the possible appropriation of the Article 39 funds. I would move that to the top.
To the top.
And then I would work your way down with the annual budget, the capital, and then the opioid.
Okay, thank you for that point of order. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution approving the use of Article 39 funds?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Whiteside. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Any discussion?
I'll just share.
Yes, thank you.
One of the things about this funding is that we wholeheartedly support not cutting the schools' funding and restoring both BCS and ACS to the FY25 adopted budget levels. And so we know the importance of being able to have strong public schools and thankful for our legislative delegation and school board members who have been working together to work out an agreeable solution for use in art. to work out an agreeable solution for using Article 39 funds to help us get through this extremely challenging budget year. And, and just to be clear, I want to read some from the, the resolution here, just to be clear that we are meeting the language that you all have been working on together with that. And so the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners intends to utilize this funding source to return the schools to pre-Haleen, the school year 25 funding levels, even as the counties project negative revenue growth. And the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners intends to receive a recommendation in a public meeting from a joint committee, including a member of each school board and the county commission regarding the allocation of the Article 39 funding. And the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners intends to return a proportionate share of revenue replacement to replenish the Article 39 funds utilized for school operating expenses if revenue replacement funding becomes available to Buncombe County. And then the last statement, it is in the best interest of the residents of Buncombe County as a whole to utilize existing revenue sources rather than further exacerbating the impact of additional tax increases on the already economically impacted survivors of Tropical Storm Haleen.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right, there being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any, does anyone abstain? Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, we will move into our annual fund budget ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to adopt the annual funds budget ordinance with the addition of the ACS tax rate increase from 10.62 to 11 cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells, second. Thank you, Commissioner Whiteside. All right, I will take this moment to open the floor for discussion, and Commissioner White, Wells made the motion, so we'll start with her.
Okay, and I made a few notes because there's, this is certainly the most challenging budget year since I have been serving on the commission. And, and thinking about all this, the impacts of this, of major storm disasters on local government budgets often see revenue eroding as people move, property values and economic activity declining, and unemployment increasing. We actually heard from Dan Gerlock earlier, and thankfully, due to, as a county and as a community, to how we've all been working over these past several months, we've been trying to mitigate some of these typical impacts. But we know that we still have a long ways to go as, as we've heard of these economic impacts. So though, though we're making important strides in this recovery, we still have less to spend on needed services, and we must ensure that this doesn't impact our neighbors who have the most needs. We also don't want to lose our ability to effectively borrow for important capital expenditures that will help us reduce the cost of future storms and spur economic growth to benefit our community, both in the short term and in the long term. And we must weigh and balance these overall needs for our community. Not just the loudest voices, but the needs from all over our community, including the Bottle County Services that impact so many, our public schools, our local farms and businesses, and the needs of our people who have been through so much with the devastation from Haleen and its aftermath. And property taxes are the largest revenue source for local government, and we must be careful because modest income people disproportionately pay a larger percent of their earnings on housing than the wealthier do. And wealthier newcomers are likely better to, able to absorb the rising tax burdens and rents, while longtime modest income residents, especially those on fixed incomes, are more likely to be financially stressed with the extra burden. And North Carolina law requires us to have the same tax rate on all property in the county. Thus, increases in revenue are considered after all opportunities for reduced spending have been exhausted. We have heard from John of what the county has worked on very diligently to reduce that. We have reduced capital outlay, maintenance, department spending, and reviewed personnel strategies. These are all standard local government spending reductions, and we also reduce strategic community investments, which we all very much believe in those investments, and that was also very challenging. We're not adding any new positions. We've only reclassified two positions to focus specifically on recovery and floodplain management, and we're staggering those start dates for vacant positions to save additional funds. We have reduced the county expenditures by well more than 17 million over the course of this budget cycle in order to prioritize essential operations. And the largest investment from our general fund goes to education, with more, with more than 120 million going to education. And then on top of that, also around 4 million, or I think over 4 million, going to pre-K. And then there's the additional supplemental tax rate for Asheville City Schools of close to 17 million. So I take my role of representing all of Buncombe County very seriously, and I'll continue to listen to the needs of all of our community and weigh and balance these needs as we proceed with making informed decisions for the benefit of our entire community and our future. And I appreciate the months of research and budget crunching that our staff have done, the serious deliberations, time and community outreach that my colleagues have put into this budget, the conversations with our school partners, and community feedback from across the county. While this is not a budget that I believe any of us would wish for, I believe it represents a responsible path forward as we continue to work together to strengthen and invest in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. We'll just go around the dais. Go ahead, Commissioner Sloan.
Manager, I don't know that I have the words to describe my, my thanks and admiration for the staff for getting us through to this point. So I think I'll just leave, I'll leave it at that. I think it speaks for, speaks for itself, and I understand the challenge we all had to, in our attempt to fund a government that everybody expected and had experience with last year with less money than we had last year. That's, that's, that was kind of our goal, whether, I don't know, I wish someone had told us that when we started back in January. But respectfully, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this budget for the first time since getting elected. And I'm a no on this budget as presented because I think it's too reliant on luck, and I'm worried that we might wish we had some more luck in our back pocket. And that's because tonight we're using all of our emergency measures all at once. We are, as a county government, at our limit of our own emergency fund, our fund balance usage. We really can't or shouldn't dip into that further. Tonight, we're forcing the schools to use their emergency fund to balance their budget for a second time in the last few months. We're asking the schools to, to balance their budget by diverting funds from school capital, which again, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think that's fiscally responsible. We are also delaying a payment into a retirement account, which is a bill that we, as a county, still owe. And each of those things on their own are not necessarily a problem for me, not objectional, objectional to me, but aggregated together, I think are, are too much and something I'm, I'm afraid we might regret. And I would feel differently about this if I thought that the American economy were, you know, at rock bottom today, but I, I'm afraid I can't, I can't say that. We have a federal government doing everything it can to raise prices on everything, a Congress that's doing the same, and the macroeconomic conditions that we face today are unprecedented really since World War II. Consumer sentiment is at record lows. We're at risk of a recession. We could be in a recession today, we could be in a recession three months from now. Mr. Gerlock earlier today showed us the March statewide sales tax numbers that are down. That's a concerning indicator for me. And the type of recession we might find ourselves in, and I hope we don't, but that, the type of recession we might find ourselves in might not be like 2009. It could include inflation. It could, it could be tied to bad trade policy and therefore be the kind of recession that we can't get ourselves out of with fiscal stimulus like we did in 2009, and that concerns me seriously. And at that point, after using all of our tools, if something like that were to occur, if we're using all of our tools tonight, we won't have anything left in our back pocket to use if times get, get worse. We will have used every, every tool we have tonight. And this, and for that reason, this budget, I think, puts us in a vulnerable place. It puts the schools in an extraordinarily vulnerable place. And it's for all those reasons that my, my vote is no. And I just want to say one more thing, you know, we're watching the federal government kind of dissolve before our eyes, and the state government has spent the last 10 years diverting money, money from the poor via tax changes to give tax breaks to corporations that nobody asked for. And so with all those things kind of combined, the stability and trust in government is dropping, the stability and trust in elected officials is dropping as well. In keeping with that, and so, you know, while I know that, for example, county government via property taxes can't fund free and equal public education for every child, I know that that's not mathematically possible, but I, I do think we live in a different time that's changing very rapidly, and we have to have a conversation as a commission and as a community on what it means to be a county government, on what local government should be for people. Because we were all created, county governments, local governments generally were created in a completely different time, and our purpose might need to be changed anew in this new time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloan. Commissioner Ball?
Thank you. So bear with me, this budget has been one of the hardest tasks I have undertaken, and so I've got, I have some thoughts I'd like to share. First, I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight for caring enough about our community to be here, to support our county services, our schools, our neighbors, our families, and our future. I don't need to tell you all that our community was severely impacted by Haleen, both our people and our budgets. With millions in lost revenue, we now face the hard task of crafting a budget that supports our critical needs and every member of our community. Let me start by saying, if I have a superpower, it's that I went to public schools. I say, I say that because we've heard so much about that during this budget discussion. I grew up learning alongside kids from every race, income level, dream and barrier. That's where my understanding of equity and justice took root. My mother was a special education teacher in our public schools in three different states. When a child would have a meltdown, make it, making it impossible for a teacher to teach the other 30 kids in her class, you would hear, "Mr. Ball, room 211," and there she would show up, and she would save the day. She later taught in, for South County Youth Psychiatric Ward and later in the Juvenile Attention Center. My sister's a former public school teacher and principal and now a superintendent here in Western North Carolina. So public education isn't just policy for me, it's personal. Those experiences shape why I fight for public schools, but it also shapes why I recognize the hard realities that so many people in our county are now facing. We are still in this storm. Hurricane Haleen wasn't just a weather event, it was a game changer. We saw a presentation earlier today during our briefing that showed that half of the economic loss from Haleen occurred in Buncombe County, totaling, totaling roughly $910 million. We went from having the lowest unemployment rate in the state to one of the highest. Loss of expected growth and in fact, significant decline in property and sales tax revenue, which makes up 75% of our county revenue, has presented a serious problem. Our economic pie is smaller this year, but yet we still have to serve our community with well-trained first responders, 911 dispatchers, social workers, schools, and a number of legally mandated services. In many sectors of our local economy, especially small businesses and hospitality, still haven't recovered. These businesses aren't just our economy, they are our neighbors' livelihoods, our tax base, and a key part of what makes our county great. According to FEMA, 40 to 60% of small businesses never reopen after a major disaster like Haleen, and of those that do, about a quarter close within the first year. As someone who has worked in Asheville service industry, I can tell you that the boom of the fall keeps many of our businesses afloat through the bust of winter. Haleen wiped out that season, and now many businesses are hanging on by a thread. Painfully, we have seen many local staples, Laughing Seed, Dilbar, Storm Rumbar, Bouchon, Elder, Rhubarb, Isis Bistro, Vivian, Bottle Riot, Little Pearl, just to name a few. I've heard that around 30 ABC permits haven't yet been reapplied for by the June 1 deadline, which tells us that businesses are scaling down, are waiting and watching, uncertain about what the summer and fall may bring. We are in a very precarious place. We can't afford to push more businesses over the edge with an overly aggressive tax hike. If we do, we risk losing both the revenue we need and the character that makes this place home. Sadly, this year's budget is a zero sum game. Every yes to one depart, every yes to one department is a no to another. Haleen devastated our fund balance, and we're still waiting for FEMA to reimburse for debris cleanup and other significant costs, many of which may never be repaid. With little in reserves, we have little cushion for future disasters like possible wildfires, another storm, an economic slowdown, as Commissioner Sloan pointed to. Counties in North Carolina don't have the tools that a lot of people expect. We can't levy income taxes, we don't control most hotel taxes, we can't tax, tax second homes differently. Our only real lever is property tax, and that is a blunt, regressive tool. It hits hardest in our legacy neighborhoods where, where home values have spiked so fast that longtime residents are now at risk of displacement, and that's not growth, that's gentrification. People are counting on us to make tough, tough decisions. So let me be clear, I believe in our public schools, I believe in our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers, our school counselors. Many have shown up in force tonight and in the prior weeks, and as an organizer by trade, I respect the game. Well done. I'm proud of you all for standing up and fighting for education, I really, really am. Our schools have asked for a no cuts budget and an increase to the ACS special tax, and yes, this commission has worked really hard and really creatively to protect schools from staff or service cuts, even in this difficult year. Thanks to our local supplements, before I was a county commissioner, Buncombe County has, has some of the best funded schools in Western North Carolina. In FY23, the commission increased school funding by over 11%. In FY24, by over 16%. And then Haleen hit. And I really grieve for the students across North Carolina whose communities can't provide local supplements like we have. They rely oftentimes solely on the inadequate state funding from the General Assembly. Here in Buncombe County, I asked, I asked that we consider, how do we support our schools and preserve what makes our community livable? So that children not only learn in our schools, but can live safely and have parks to play in and thrive throughout their lifetime here in Buncombe County. That means fully funding our fire departments, who have carried us through so much of Haleen, and before the storm had delayed upgrades for years and have, and many have now hit a breaking point. It means supporting our 911 dispatch center, which I've toured, and I can tell you that exhausted staff deserve trauma-informed care and training. Protecting our parks, libraries, and the Family Justice Center, which helps people in our community that are oftentimes facing domestic violence. Bolstering mental health services, which are stretched thin from Haleen's aftermath. Supporting our dedicated and talented county staff who, after the storm, their jobs, many of whom their jobs completely changed. They had to learn completely new skills and learn about things they never expected to have to deal with. We have made painful cuts already to things that are very, we care deeply about. Farm land preservation, affordable housing grants, reparations contributions, programs that support nonprofit partners like Physical Legal, Homeward Bound, and others. We have made these tough choices. We have refused to cut some programs like early childhood education, because you can't start behind and play catch up your entire life. School impact funds, we have not cut. Our homeowner grant program, we have not cut. And those are the values we've put into our budget. So right now, we need fairness, and we need a smart strategy. Some have asked, why not just raise taxes more? I hear you. But many in our community are on fixed incomes, already choosing between food or medicine, heat or gas to get them to the doctor's appointment. I participated in this year's Point in Time Count, which is a community effort that serves as a single night census of individuals experiencing homelessness. I met an elderly woman at the Owen Community Care Station who was homeless because her and her family couldn't keep up with the rising cost of living. I met a young woman living in her car after losing her job and unable to find a place she could afford, and these stories are increasingly common. I want to acknowledge that this common. I want to acknowledge that the state legislature has handed our county and our schools unfunded mandates while simultaneously underfunding public schools. They have removed the income cap and expanded a private school voucher program that will pull $1.9 million from our local schools' budgets just next year. And I'm not even going to get into the federal landscape, because that is creating a lot of uncertainty. Counties have not received any revenue replacement. And without that, we are left to balance this budget on our own. So, with all that, we must balance this budget. I support ensuring schools do not see reductions in funding from the previous year. I support giving ACS a bump above FY ' '25 adopted levels, because they have clearly stated that FY '25 will not allow them to keep all staff like BCS is able to pull off. I support shifting Article 39 funds to help backfill our schools' needs, done in partnership with our school boards. That resolution we just passed is our commitment to that. And though, not in this budget, for future consideration, I strongly support putting an ACS special tax increase on the ballot next spring, because I think it is the most transparent and democratic path forward to let the community decide and show their support for our schools. So to close, this commission has worked collaboratively, asking hard questions, searching for better answers, and now we must chart a path together as a community. This moment requires openness, honesty, creativity, and a bit of grace under pressure. So I'm proud to serve with commissioners who reflect that commitment, from Terry's experience in the classroom, Amanda's lived experience as a parent in the system, to Al's decades of advocacy, Parker's creative and thoughtful leadership, Jennifer's steadfastness to her community, and Martin's sharp legal insight. I am proud of the resilient, determined people of Buncombe County, and it is the honor of my life to serve you. We've made progress in Helene, but the road ahead is still steep. It's important that we, as a community, climb that hill together, that we continue to support each other, volunteer, stay involved, show up for each other, show compassion, care, and understanding. Because if we are anything, we are in this together.
Thank you, Commissioner Ball. Commissioner Moore?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind me deferring for a moment.
That is just fine. Commissioner Whitesides?
Wow. At once, I'm speechless in some ways, because everybody's said just about everything. But first of all, I would like to thank our staff. Because the county staff has gone way beyond the call of duty. When I saw what our staff was doing during Helene, when I see one of our staff members, they had two days after the storm, working like it was unreal, the way she was going, like everything was fine. And I almost cried when I found out that during the storm, she had lost her home. But this is all part of what it means to live in Buncombe County. One thing I've found, and I've been here longer than most, is that when the going gets tough, we get tougher. And that's what, I think, has been great. I couldn't pick a better team to work with when I look at our commissioners. And I couldn't pick a better group to represent than our constituents in Buncombe County. Because I've seen people, we all come together through this time to work through it. And when we talk about schools, look, I understand. I'm married to a 35-year school teacher. I spent eight years on the Asheville City School Board, and 16 years of my life on two different North Carolina university boards. So I understand. And coming up, when I did as an African American in a time when the schools were separate, but certainly weren't equal, I know what it's like to fight for education. As a matter of fact, I started at 15 years old with A Score, a group fighting for education, right here in Asheville, when I was a student at Stevensley High School. But what I'm going to say is now, we all didn't get, and I'm voting for the budget, but we all didn't get what we want in the budget. During times like this, we have to give and take. But at the end of the day, we've got to, and I commend the commissioners for this, think of the entire community, everyone in the community. And what got me Sunday morning was when a member, the oldest member of our church, she's 92 years old, when she told me, Alfred, whatever you do Tuesday, don't raise my property tax too much. She didn't say not to raise, but she said too much. And I thought about that. And I told her, I said, all we're doing is doing what we've got to do, hopefully, for us to stay afloat. But all I ask in closing is, we've got to be patient and realize that we're in this for a long haul. And everybody I talk to, different parts of the country, this could take us the next 10 years. It'll be probably several county commissions to go through this, a lot of staff members. But we've got to go through it together. And I hope, as a community, we won't forget that. Because it's going to take all of us, the old saying, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. And this is what we need now. And we've got to think, though, I'll end by saying, we've got to think of the community as a whole. And that's what I like about working with this commission and staff. Because we're thinking of everybody that we work with, and especially Buncombe County commissioners. We've got the schools, as you mentioned, the fire departments, everyone to think about. But I will say this, though, in what we're going through in closing. Forty years of banking didn't prepare me for what we are going through now. Because I'm one of the ones coming up here in the mountains, who I believe that the storm that we just had would never happen to us here. Because we've helped everybody else in the state and in the country. But now, it's our time. And we will come through this, I think, and stronger than ever. We did it since I've been on the commission. When I came in in '16, the county, the problems we had then. When I see what we went through with COVID and what we're going through now. But I hope that our goal is, as a commission and a community, to come out of this stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Commissioner Horton?
I'm smiling because I'm number four. I always say to people, you have to have four, right? I'm number four. I live in Fairview, and I, like many residents in District 1, was affected by the storm. We just started the journey to go back home this past weekend. I have a six-month-old little girl and two toddlers, and I'm really excited about that. I made the comment from up here at the dais that where I come from, we take care of our children first. And sometimes that means that we have to make hard decisions. And today, we're making a hard decision. But I think it's the right decision. I'm not going to say much, because you guys have said it all, and thank you for that. Love our team. I'm in support of the 2.9 cents increase.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Moore?
I can't continue any longer. It's the attorney and me, I guess.
He's got to go.
I will say thanks to our staff. I'm not going to go fully into how challenging it was to be at the EOC, when I could finally get out of my place and get downtown. So I'm very thankful for everything that you all did. And I appreciate that we are having important conversations, and we don't have to balance colas against other interests, because people went through a lot. And that's, I believe in a lot of arguments, I don't think we do that to each other. So I want to start there, because our staff worked very hard during that, was probably the hardest time of a lot of our lives. I appreciate everyone who took the time to engage and speak with us. It has been a long process, and I don't know if you all know how many minutes, I'm glad we don't keep track of minutes on phones anymore. I'd be bankrupt. But I think it's important for us to have these dialogues, because it's how democracy works. It's what gets us to the right outcome in every case, is hearing from people, listening, being confident in all of us working toward the same goal, regardless of where we land on the day of the vote. And every year, as I think all of my colleagues have said, keep thinking it's going to be the hardest year, and I'm wrong consistently. So I will name that challenge, and I'll keep it short, because I can do math, despite whatever you've seen on TV. I'm going to vote no. Commissioner Sloan raised many of the topics that were on my heart. I don't think we've lived in a more unpredictable time at a national level. I've never been more pessimistic about the federal government actually funding the needs of our local governments, and schools included in that. But in terms of what we suffered as a county, it is far more than any one single pot, and that is something that we can't make ourselves whole from in a single year. And I hear that, and I appreciate Commissioner Whitesides' perspective on that. I think we serve in an extremely predictable time for our state legislature, because every year, I basically expect the same thing, which is to fall short. And my personal belief in how I approach budgets is planning for the worst and hoping for the best, and just trying to be ready to tackle any financial challenges we have. And I appreciate our team, that we have spent a lot of time, a lot of time, like 1:00 AM with some people on commission who have talked to me super late at night. So it's not done lightly. I think we have to make some difficult decisions. I get it. I'm not going to go on about that, because you've heard from a lot of folks where we're at. And the utmost respect for my colleagues and where we're at. I know all of these decisions weigh heavily on all of us. I hope we can keep these conversations going and make some progress in finding meaningful ways for how we support the things we all care about, K-12 education, but also early childhood and things that we were very protective of this budget season. Public safety efforts, not just for our sheriff's department, but for our community paramedics and our first responders, and the many people who were standing there with us at the EOC, trying to navigate Helene. And for the second year in a row, just having to pray we can shift our thinking to some kind of multi-year approach, rather than doing this year-by-year process that I don't think anyone's particularly thrilled with, but acknowledging where we are, where we have to be, and everyone voting their conscience as they see fit, and still having respect for all the people who we're serving with. Because I know it has not been easy for anybody who's gone through this, and I'm very thankful to serve with you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. You've heard so much from each of these amazing people that sit on this dais, that serve the entirety of Buncombe County. We thought last year's budget was the toughest ever, and then Helene landed. I am beyond proud to have worked with every single commissioner on this dais, on negotiations that landed us a lower-than-anticipated tax increase for the residents of Buncombe County. We worked diligently on this budget with a goal to begin to return Buncombe County to its prosperity. Last November, when Commissioner Sloan and I had the honor of visiting DC to meet with our federal legislators, we had the distinct pleasure of meeting with President Biden. And when he came to me to shake my hand and introduce himself as if I didn't know who he was, and I told him that I was the new county commission chair, he looked at me and he said, "That is the hardest job I've ever had in elected politics." I remembered those words often throughout this budget process. My commitment to Buncombe County drove me to work consistently from day one up until walking in here this evening. I have taken a lot of heat in this community for cooperating with multiple layers of government, listening to taxpayers, listening to people still waiting on insurance settlements from Helene, listening to business owners who desperately need grants to get their businesses back up and running, and generating sales tax that we are desperate for. Those same business owners who are struggling to pay back pandemic loans. Listening to residents who want everyone in our community to fully recover from Hurricane Helene. Former President Biden, he was right. This is a hard job, and every single one of us on this dais and our amazing Buncombe County staff have done hard work and made hard decisions to get us to this vote tonight. I will say it again, I am beyond proud to work with the staff. I am beyond proud to work with each of these other six commissioners on the dais. And I will be supporting this budget vote this evening. Commissioners, this is one of the most important tasks we have ahead of us when we take the oath of office to be Buncombe County commissioners. With that said, I would like to call for an individual roll call vote this evening.
May I ask one more discussion question that I forgot to ask?
Sure.
May I ask if Dr. Jackson, a question briefly?
Is...
Proceededly, can you do it?
Proceededly, can we do that with a motion on the table?
There, I think that you...
Jennifer's like, "Rabbits." Say that again, Avril. I'm hearing from Commissioners on the dais to take the vote.
Okay. Dr. Jackson, I would like to ask you a question afterwards, which I don't know we've spoken about. So, thank you.
And point of order, I will start back with Commissioner Wells. Your vote, yes or no? Aye. No?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Our budget passes, five to two. Our no's, Commissioner Sloan and Vice Chair Moore. All right. Commissioners, we still have a few additional ordinances to adopt this evening. And the next one is our capital funds budget ordinance.
Madam Chair, if you may, is now an appropriate time for a two-minute mental health reset?
No, I think we need to finish the votes on the budget ordinances.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
We can take one after that. Do I have a motion to adopt the capital funds project?
So moved.
Vice Chair Moore, segmented by Commissioner Whitesides. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Promise I'm not racing you out, sorry?
The capital funds ordinance passes, and I do hope that folks will stick around. I have some final comments that I hope folks will stay to hear. We also need to approve the resolution directing the expenditure of the opioid settlement fund. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Sloan?
Yeah, whoever.
Okay.
Up to you.
Commissioner Whitesides, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we take a, I need a break, and we have wrapped up this part of our evening. I just, I want to take a few more moments and just take a moment to acknowledge our staff, our budget director, John Hudson, our county manager, all of our assistant county managers, department heads, and everyone from the top of the organization to the bottom of the organizational chart. I'm proud of where we landed tonight. We fought for every fraction of a penny with less of an increase in the tax rate than was originally proposed. We must be fiscally responsible, and we must be prepared for what comes next and for our recovery. Make no mistake, education is part of our recovery, an important piece of our recovery. I spend my days, my evenings, and sometimes weekends, working to raise funds to ensure that community college students have access to public education. Many of those students are enrolled in Asheville City and Buncombe County schools. I have supported countless emergency fund requests for your students. I work in public education. I'm married to a public educator. I'm a parent of an Asheville high graduate, and now a public university student. I live and breathe the importance of public education. As commissioners, we serve the entirety of the county, not a singular district or a singular group. Essential and mandated services have been impacted, and we must work towards restoring them and ensuring we provide them at the highest levels of service possible. We are only maintaining those services in our budget, not increasing them. Residents across our county deserve nothing less than the essential services that we are mandated to provide. We have many areas to address as part of our recovery and resilience. We have many areas to address as part of our recovery and resilience over the next few years. You've heard many of those. We must fund public safety and not neglect the desperate need we have for our own emergency operations center and additional ambulances, paramedics, sheriff's deputies. I could go on. We must be prepared for the next disaster. Through this budget, we're showing you, I hope, that we listen, we respond, your concerns are our concerns, we negotiate, we collaborate, we cooperate with our staff, with local agencies, local schools, and our legislators in Raleigh and Washington, DC. And we, as a community, we must commit to working together across our entire county to continue to recover, rebuild, and become an even more resilient Buncombe County. And I look forward to working with each of you, each of you in this room, and our staff and our community as a whole to become a more resilient Buncombe County. Thank you.
Oh, may I, please, before we lose momentum, I would really appreciate the chance to ask Dr. Jackson a question. Dr. Jackson, may I ask briefly? And I apologize for not, I should have tabled the motion and then came back, but, Dr. Jackson, thank you for all your service, and this is a difficult time for our schools right now. I just wanted to ask openly if through Article 39 funds, you are able to receive FY25 levels of funding, will you be able to maintain the staff that you currently have employed?
Thank you for the question, and to each of our commissioners, thank you for your hard work, for all the conversations, the one-on-one conversations, and for listening to our teachers and staff. I will share with you that we have begun to receive some insurance reimbursements from storm damage, which helps us with our fund balance. I do believe that we will be able to maintain the staff members that we have for next year. As the commission knows, using fund balance is a one-time opportunity, and so it does put us in a bit of a precarious situation should there be another emergency. But as our commissioners have shown, they are our partners, and so if we find ourselves in that situation, we would certainly be here working with our commissioners. But I do believe that with the resolution this evening, of course, our board meets Thursday night, and our board will make the ultimate decision, but it'll be my recommendation to use the fund balance we have available. It may require a change in our policy to allow us to dip below policy mandates to be able to do that, but as educators and as Buncombe County ends, we do the tough things because our kids deserve that and will continue to do that. Thank you for the question, Commissioner.
Thank you for your work and partnership during this difficult time, and please, as you need, as your school has needs, please, don't hesitate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I believe I have been asked to take a short recess to reset before we have a few remaining items on our agenda this evening. Yes, Commissioner Wells?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we just had one more item of business, don't we?
Is that, we do. Are we good then with the only one more?
No, I'm happy to withdraw my motion if needed.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We will withdraw Vice Chair Moore's motion for a short recess since we only have one. Victoria Riker, thank you for sticking through the last few hours with us. She is here to discuss the CDBG recovery housing program.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Edwards, and for everyone else and the work that you all are doing. I'm bringing forth to you all that the NC Commerce has awarded us some additional funds to help expand Transformation Village with ABCCM. So we were awarded an additional $2.5 million, which brings us to $3.5 million of the $5 million that is needed to build the 64 unit with 32 units dedicated to women and mothers in recovery from substance use. And so I, at this moment, I'll just kind of share even an update as well. We have completed the, or about to complete our environmental review. We hope to get that submitted within this month. We have consulted with some subject matter experts around environmental review, and there were no mitigation recommendations. So again, submitting that environmental review within this month, anticipating, let's just say maybe up to three months to get that final approval, and then we'll continue to follow that process of adopting that environmental review to then be able to request funding approval to release additional funds outside of the administrative dollars that are already approved. So we're moving along while we were waiting for these additional dollars, and today we just ask that you all consider approving the resolution to accept these additional funds from NC Commerce and to approve the budget amendment.
Motion to approve the resolution to accept the additional funds and approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wells, seconded by Commissioner Sloan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Victoria. We appreciate the work that you do. We do have a few board appointments to make this evening, and our first is our Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. There are five reappointments to make. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the five reappointments. Would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Daniel Bierman, Deborah Olt, Susan Shimer, Eileen McMenon, and Melissa Harmon.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those five have been reappointed. We also have two appointments with recommendations for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Can I? Point of order. If I may, we did this one. We just appointed Susanna last meeting.
Oh, did we? Okay. Thank you for that. Well, that was our only one.
And point of order, so wouldn't it be an appropriate time to add a commissioner to that slot?
So there is a commissioner that need, that does need to be appointed to that, and we can bring that back for approval on the 17th. I think we have a couple of interests, and I think there's, looking to see if there's an opportunity for more than one commissioner to serve. I love that we have two commissioners, or three or four who want to serve, but we are gonna look into the rules around that board service specifically, so we'll bring that back. Thank you, Commissioner Ball.
I remember we were supposed to appoint somebody back in December, but we didn't for some reason. That memory is in my head for some reason.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did. And at the time, I don't think we had...
I don't know if that reason is still relevant, but...
It is not.
I don't think we had interest at that time. Is that what happened?
So just to offer some context, at that point, I was on both J-Rac, JCPC, early childhood, and I think I'd lost track of how many boards I'm on, so at that point, we were still figuring out who would be most appropriate for that, so complete vacancy, no one's taking a spot for me, it's completely open, we just haven't done it yet.
Okay. We'll bring that back in two weeks. All right, commissioners, are there any updates from the boards and commissions that you serve on this evening? All right, I will just make a quick announcement that I do serve on the EDC and then an ex-officio in the Chamber of Commerce board, and we had a significant over $1 point million investment announced at the EDC reception last night with a very cool company called Fuel, F-U-E-L Goods, a female-owned company to former professional cyclists who are investing in high-tech, high-wage jobs here in Buncombe County. So it's exciting to be a part of that with the EDC in the chamber. All right, with that, our next briefing and regular meeting will be held on June 17th at 3 o'clock PM. The first meeting in July, which would be July 1st, has been canceled. Kurt, do we have a need for a closed session?
No.
I heard some news up here. All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let the community know that there is a free mega clinic going on at the Harris Casino. I call it the Civic Center, I'm sorry.
Those old school of us.
They set up today. It's amazing what they've done to there, and they've also partnered with Appalachian Community Health, the Sheriff's Department, but they were out in Swananoa for three days. I was out there the last two days. It was, it's amazing what they're doing. It's free medical, vision, dental, mental health, and then they're gonna have the ability to even refer community members to someone so that we can continue. Yeah, it's amazing. So check them out, and even if you have time just to stop in there, ask for Dr. Lila Lewis.
And I think she came and spoke to us.
She did, two months ago. I've been working with her diligently for the last two months.
Thank you, Commissioner Horton. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand. I apologize. All right, so we do have a motion.
Sorry, really quick, I just do want to flag that on Thursday, I will be at West Asheville Library from 6:00 to 8:00 PM with State House Representative Brian Turner and City Councilwoman Maggie Ullman to do a city-county-state-town hall. I know these issues can be confusing, and so we just want to have all local levels of government there to answer questions and bring the community together, so thank you for that.
All right. We have a motion.
All the questions.
Thank you. All in favor of adjournment this evening, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.